Welcome to the regular meeting of the Danville City Commission for this evening, Monday, December the 10th. The hour is 5:30. We have three out of five commissioners, which does give us quorum, so I will call us to order. I will ask that we be led in a moment of prayer by Commissioner James H. Atkins.
Seeing this is the last commission meeting of 2018, and the fact that we're here in this setting, I'd like to just ask everyone to take a moment of silence, and as you enjoy that moment of silence, to reflect upon all those successful things that have happened in our community during the year 2018. So if you would.
I just celebrated my 77th birthday last week.
Congratulations. Congratulations. We will now be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Rick Searus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. You've had the agenda before you. If there's no additions or corrections or eliminations, I'll consider it approved, and we'll move right on. Okay? Item one is the, I shouldn't say item one, we are at that point in the meeting where we have here the public. This is the public's opportunity to address commission and staff for three minutes on any subject that is on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity later on to do the same on any subject that is not on tonight's agenda. So, anyone want to take the microphone? Seeing none, we'll move right on into item one, and that's approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. Do I hear a motion to approve of the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Searus. Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Any discussion, additions, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Propose like sign, motion carries. Item two, this is where we get into the fun part. This is the retirement recognition for police officer Robert Ladd. Chief Gray, if you'll lead the ceremony, sir.
He's on, lad, this is my last quarter I can give you.
He didn't read that one to me.
No?
Oh, it's not yours, sorry. Never mind.
It's mine.
That's mine too.
Mayor.
He didn't like you standing behind him now. I don't blame him now. I'll get over here.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and all those attended, family and friends, you know, Ladd came to us in 2005 roughly, from Harrisburg, Kentucky, as a police officer. We didn't know what we was getting into, and we took Robert Ladd on. But it's been a fun ride with Ladd, and we did all the roasting last week, so I'm not going to roast him tonight.
Too much.
No, I'm not going to. We'll be professional. Four, five years here, Ladd moved into investigations and became one of our detectives back there. He was an accident reconstructionist. Robert is a very detailed and oriented type person, handled a lot of, and assisted in a lot of heavy cases during his time in the investigations, which ran pretty much from 2009 to roughly about the end of 2016?
Yes.
2017. But as an investigator, Ladd also launched a unit that investigated and apprehended internet predators that would prey upon the youth of our community, and probably didn't receive a lot of recognition for that because we kept those things low profile to try to attract and capture many of those low-profile predators as we could. But Robert, with the help of Detective Graff, started that and was one of the first in this area, in this region, that started investigating internet crimes and things like that, and did an excellent job of getting those type of predators off the streets and helping keep the young people in our community safe. Unfortunately, that requires you to do, or to be, well, Ladd's profiles, we're not going to go into that, we'll just leave that alone. But some of his profile pictures on his internet, social media pages were...
Interesting.
Yes, they were. That's a good word, interesting. In 2017, Ladd transitioned back to patrol, foreseeing his upcoming retirement. We lost a lot of experience and skill sets in that time, but Ladd also, in the last two years, has been a great assistance to us on patrol. We've been short, we've got a very young and not as experienced department as we've had in the past, so Ladd's been that unranked leader and supervisor for us on patrols at night. And just for me to go to bed at night, knowing sometimes that, we didn't have a supervisor on third shift, but Ladd was taking the watch, was a great comfort. So Ladd, just from, I gave you my stuff last week, but from the Police Department and for me personally, I just want to say thank you for your 15 years of service roughly almost to the citizens of Danville and to the Danville Police Department. I appreciate your sacrifices and your support during my tenure, Chief. I hope your retirement is as less hectic as your work has been, but I hope it has been just as enjoyable because we've enjoyed having you these last 14 years, and I think you've, well, I know you've made fun of some people here, so I think you had a pretty good time while you were here. So I just want to say from us and the Police Department, congratulations again on your retirement, happy sales and smooth sailing. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, the best part about this gentleman right here, look at that smile. He always got a smile on his face. Every time I ever saw him, he had a smile on his face. But I'm confident in the undercover world of internet, it's a nasty business, but somebody's got to do it, and you've done it, and I appreciate that. All of us appreciate that.
Thank you.
And on behalf of...
We never knew why he had that smile on his face.
We won't correlate the two now. On behalf of all of us, city of Danville, citizens, everybody, want to present to you, and I want everyone to see this beautiful knife with his badge right over here and his badge number. Now, you can use this while you're fishing to cut all the line that you're going to get tangled up in while you're doing it, and if after you get through with all these honeydews, you get bored, you come right on back.
Well, thank you.
There's plenty of room in this boat, anytime. Now, sir, microphone's yours, should you choose to say anything, feel free. This is your shot to get back.
Well, I really won't get back at anybody. I mean, Chief Gray's right, you know, my honeydew list is going to be long and lengthy, and it's really up to my wife to, you know, determine how hectic my lifestyle is going to be now. But I just got to say one thing, you cannot do this job as public service with fire or police, you cannot do it without the support of family and your friends. Friends that have, you have gained by working here, and the family that you have is a huge support factor. When I first came here, I didn't have any family in Kentucky. The only family I have is the ones I've married into. Now, with the support of my in-laws, Robert and Rosemarie Lyons, my wife and my two kids, and the rest of my family that couldn't be here today, I've been able to maintain, I guess, the level-headedness and the ability to go through 20 years in this kind of an uphill-downhill kind of career. And I think that's what it takes. It takes, you have to be grounded, and you have to adhere to family and friends. Since I've been here, I've had the opportunity to do some FTO-ing when I was younger in here, and I was so glad that I was able to do that. I've developed a good personal friend, Chase Broach, whom I actually FTO-ed years back. Strangely enough, Assistant Chief Doan was also one of my FTOs, or I was one of his FTOs. So it's kind of, really kind of weird to see him in this role, but I don't think you could ask for a better person to be in that role. He has a mindset of a police officer, he has a direction where he would like to take this Police Department, and he's fully dedicated to that. The good friends that I've had on third shift, Todd Davis, those, that could never be replaced. Pat McQueen, I went to the academy with him 20 years ago. These are friendships that you will never, never release. Even though you're gone from the PD, they will always be there. With, for that, I'm very thankful, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Item three is the retirement recognition of Lieutenant Scotty Colwell. Chief Flug?
Yes, sir.
The show is yours.
Thank you. You saw how they did it. Scotty, I've worked with you many years. I remember you coming on as a part timer early on in my career, and watched you slowly grow through your career and becoming a fire lieutenant, and it's been quite a ride, interesting. He's a very quiet man, but a man with great wisdom. You have a problem, he is my problem solver. And it was always interesting to get his point of view because you wouldn't know, but he was always thinking about what was going on, and once you asked his opinion, you would get wisdom, and I really appreciated that. And with this, like we always do with our firemen, a little bit beat up, but well-serviced, leather fire helmet for you, I want you to take that home, clear it up, look at it and say, "Those are pretty good times." But it sure is nice being retired.
Yep.
There's a few other folks who'd like to talk for you. Would you like to come up?
Scotty, on behalf of Danville professional firefighters, we wanted to thank you for your dedication over the years to the fire department, but not only to the fire department, to our cause for the last 10 years. And in appreciation of that, we're going to present you with this plaque.
And before you bestow all that wisdom on us, I'd like to also present to you, Lieutenant Scotty Colwell, a thank you for your dedicated service. Let everyone see how pretty the red is, and we hope you use this and enjoy it. Are you a fisherman by chance?
Oh, yeah.
There you go. Okay, you can do that. Now, sir, anything you'd like to say, it's your shot.
Well, I didn't bring the big book, I condensed it down. And unlike Ladd, I'm not real good with my memory, so I wrote it down so I would get all the points I wanted to say. And I'd like to thank the mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the commission and the citizens of this great city of Danville. I've been looking forward to this day, and those I work with, they can attest to that. I've been counting down the years, then you got down to shifts, and now I'm down to 96 I'm not going to say that I'm going to not miss it, I'm sure I will. I mean, the fire department's been part of my life for a very long time. My father was a volunteer firefighter in the county, that's where I got started. But you've often heard, and like Ladd said, you've often heard of the fire department being a brotherhood. I won't say it's not a brotherhood, it's family. If you used to do the math, I spend more time with the guys that I work with on shift in a year's time than I do with my son, my wife, my family, because they're in school, they're at jobs. But when I'm with the guys at work, I'm with them more, so they are a family. And we've laughed together, we've cut up with each other, we've pranked each other. I mean, just like real brothers and sisters do. I mean, and just like real brothers and sisters, we get mad at each other, but we get over. But one thing that we have that, it's unlike brothers and sisters, is we depend on each other, sometimes with our very own lives. I mean, when we go into a fire, we have to depend on our partner to bring us out if anything happens, just like they're depending on me or their partner. So we have to depend on each other. We can confide in each other if we've had a bad call, if we've seen a bad situation, and we don't know who to talk to. We don't really, and some of the stuff, we don't take home to our families. We sort of keep it in the firehouse, in that family. But we can also rejoice together. There's been several times that we've rejoiced and patted each other on the back when we've saved somebody's life. And to some people, it's not a big deal, but to us it is, because not only is it our job, it's our passion. We've helped citizens learn CPR. Just a few years ago, in this time of year, we was toy shopping, and I had this lady come up to me, and I recognized her, she said, "You taught me CPR." And I said, "Yeah, I believe I did." And she said, "Well, I had to use it the other day." I said, "Well, how'd it go for you?" She said, "Things turned out good." So not only are we going out here and helping people, we're teaching people to help people. We help keep parents have a peace of mind when we put their car seats in, to help their kids stay safe. And we go to the schools, which we just finished up a month and a half ago, teaching kids, kindergartners, preschool, first graders, on the dangers of fire, and how to stay safe from it. Ironically, our newest firefighter that just got hired, he's not here tonight, he'll be on tomorrow, was probably in about kindergarten or first grade when I started my career. So we have taught the future generations of the people that's going to be serving you. Now, I mean, I've been doing this for a long time. I started the fire service at the end of March of 1992. Almost 27 years of fire service for Boil County and for Danville. But just like our kids had to leave the nest and carve their own way in this world, as bad as we hate to see them go, it's my time to go. It's my time to spend time with family, make up for lost time. But I'd like to thank the mayor, past and present, and the commissioners, past and present, for allowing me this opportunity to live out every little boy's dream, to be a firefighter, and to ride the big red truck. And as that, I have a little thing for Officer Ladd, if he would join me up.
Here comes that pranking part.
A few years ago, the Police Department needed the fire department's help with our ladder truck. Well, Officer Ladd was the unlucky subject that had to go up in the ladder truck with me.
I think he was the only one that would do it.
So even though he was a police officer, he still wanted to ride the big red fire truck.
Like you said, it's every little boy's dream.
There you go.
And he has a picture to remember by now.
And I know what this picture is. Scotty's been the only person to get, I'm tremendously scared of heights. I mean, you get me on a six-foot ladder, and I'm just sitting there shaking. I won't budge. He's been the only person to get me 100 foot up in the air, and it was on some investigation that we were doing, whether it was a collision scene that I wanted kind of an aerial view, or the arson over here across from the courthouse on 4th Street when that house was burnt. But he's been the only one to get me that high.
Do we get to see the photo?
What are those words that, when you get on, we spoke of the internet a while ago? What are those big words that say like, "In, not, not safe, for," you know, when they give...
Right, right.
Just an odd position, I was up in the ladder truck.
Were you signaling down to the people below, is that what you were doing?
I was, and the word was, "Do not come up here." Scotty's up here, and I will show you once this is done. But it's true, police and fire will always be brothers, one red, one blue.
There you go.
That's going to be.
Item four is the proclamation for Little Miss United States, Ember Jenko. Hi, Miss Ember.
How are you doing?
How you, dear? Let's get, let's see here, and wait, everybody needs to see this child. Can everyone see this pretty thing? No?
Is it on a chair?
Ah, yeah, but I don't want it to fall off, you know? Well, I tell you what, come on, let's just parade you around the room. Everybody, everybody look at this pretty child. Huh? What about that? What about that? And as we do this, let's go back to the front, I'm going to read this. This is Little Miss United States, 2018. I know what we're going to do. Come on, you want to sit up here? Here we go. There you go. Good? Now, here we go. Little Miss United States, 2018, IJM Miss Kentucky Junior Princess, 2018, Little Miss Danville, 2018, Little Miss Boil County Fair, 2019. What are you going to do for 2018? What are you going to do for 2019? Whereas, Ember is a student at Danville Montessori and has competed in several competitions in 2018, and whereas, Ember has won the titles of Little Miss United States, IJM Miss Kentucky Junior Princess, Little Miss Danville, and Little Miss Boil County Fair in 2018, representing Danville Boil County. And whereas, Miss Jenko will represent the state of Kentucky and city of Danville at the IJM International Pageant in Florida, Orlando, Florida, in July of 19, and the Little Miss Kentucky Pageant in 2019, and will be competing in several categories, including private interview, sportswear, evening gown, and onstage questions. And whereas, Ember will represent the city of Danville and Boil County throughout the state at different events during 2018 and 19, and is a role model for the youth of Danville Boil County, and is to be commended on her many accomplishments. Now, therefore, Mayor G. Michael Paris and the city commissioners of the city of Danville, on this 10th day of December 2018, do hereby congratulate Ember Jenko on becoming Little Miss United States, IJM Miss Kentucky Junior Princess, Little Miss Danville, and Little Miss Boil County Fair 2018. And we wish her the best at the state and international competitions in 2019, and we encourage the citizens of Danville to congratulate her on her success and representation of Danville, Kentucky. Let's hear it for this fine young lady. You want to hold on to that? There you go. All right. You got a standing ovation, that's pretty good, isn't it? Now, let me help you out off of that. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Atkins, do we have a little something for her up there?
Oh, you have it. And I like to make the motion if we accept and approve the preparation.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose like sign. Mr. Atkins, did you vote there? Motion carries. Let me give you a little, maybe carry this with you, maybe it'll be a good luck charm when you go into some of these other adventures, okay? You take that and you put that on if you wish, whatever you want to do. And this is a representation of the city seal with a key. Okay? Now you get this big heavy thing. Thank you, ma'am. One more time. Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Mom and dad, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, we've had a good time so far tonight.
Shall I make a motion to go home then?
No, sir.
Oh, damn.
Item five is the Danville Boil County CVB Board appointment, and you have that in front of you, and that being Susan McGiligan, filling the unexpired term of John Learned. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Propose like sign, motion carries. Item six is Resolution 2018-12-10-01, this is the Main Street Recertification. Unless you all want to hear from Nick Wade on this, I'll take a motion on the resolution.
Oh, we want to hear from Nick. You always want to hear from Nick, right?
Why don't we do a motion first?
All right. I'll move passes the resolution number 2018-12-10-01, as presented.
Second.
Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Searus. We are in discussion, sir. Mr. Wade, floor is yours.
This is a formality. We have to have it approved every year for the past 32 years to maintain our accreditation for a nationally accredited Main Street community. It's a national program, we've been doing this for 30 years, so just a formality, nothing's changed from years past.
Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, Nick, since you're here, tell us how successful the Christmas parade was.
Well, I think the parade was a huge success. I heard from...
I heard from numerous people that it was one of the best ever, and so that's been going on for almost 40 years, so it's a long tradition of our community. We had approximately 50 entries, 10 floats, and two marching bands, which was a huge success in our opinion. So, yeah, we had approximately about 3,000 people come out and watch it, and we also livestreamed it on our Facebook page for the first time. And we had someone watch the parade from Taiwan, which was pretty impressive. And then we also had it simulcasted on WKYBFN for the first time as well.
Look at Miles back there. He said, "Taiwan." He's a Danville soldier.
Any further questions of Mr. Wade?
Well, in my comments, I was gonna say something about the miracles on Main Street, but very impressive.
Thank you.
I know a lot of people put some work into that, but that's really very impressive.
If there are no further comments, Chair, we're calling question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Item seven is Resolution 2018-12-10-02, Safe Routes to Parks Grant Application. Dr. Miles, is that you?
Yeah, please. I can probably have a seat in front of the City Commission, and I appreciate your considering an application to the Safe Routes to Parks Foundation. Mr. Blevins of the Boyle County Health Department brought this to our attention actually just last Monday. The us in this case is the Boyle-Danville Trails Alliance, who have worked the last several years to develop a vision and begin construction of a system of interconnected trailways in our community. We worked with city engineer Earl Coffey to identify a target area. City manager Ron Scott helped us become aware of other resources. We built that program together. We've received endorsements from the Health Department, the Housing Authority, and with your pleasure, the City Commission.
Do I hear a motion?
Sure. All move to accept Resolution 2018-12-10-02.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Keep up the good work.
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item number eight is the second reading of Ordinance Number 1925. This is in relation to the zone change on Stamford Road. Madam Clerk, you wanna read that for the public, please?
Yes, this is the second reading of Ordinance 1925, and ordinance changing the zone from AR-1, Agricultural, Residential, and IBD Industrial Business Development to NCR-C, Neighborhood, Center, Residential, and Commercial, for approximately 45.844 acres, more or less of real property located along Stamford Road.
Any discussion?
I'll offer a motion for approval.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Sears?
Yes.
Thank you. Item nine is Code Enforcement Monthly Report. Ms. Lester.
Good evening. You have before you the monthly report for November. As you can see, we had 23 business licenses issued, which kinda comes out around about our average. We're between that 25 and 32 each month. And we recovered 15 liens for a total of $2,663.27. We had 120 parking citations issued, and we were able to complete 164 proactive enforcement inspections. And we had total inspections of 227 for the month, violations and complaints. And we issued in December, you would hear about that next month, but we just issued a new alcohol license to the Buffalo Wings and Rings, which will be opening December 19th, so have a new business opening.
Yeah.
I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the commission? What's left of us tonight?
Yeah, I can do that real quick. It's always good to see these reports and, you know, the business licenses, et cetera, et cetera. We have this list of about 11 condemned properties. If I remember right, every now and then you kinda give us an update on what's happening with those. Is that right?
I did not bring that with me, Commissioner Sears, but I will be glad to bring that for the next report. But we are, we do add to and take off. If you'll notice, those properties change. So as things get either demolished or renovated or fixed up, then those come off.
Think it'd be a good project for 2019.
Yeah. Now, the first one, if nothing changes, is up for demolition on the third. So if we don't get anything that changes from that, that one will be up for demolition.
And what address is that?
The 529 Russell Street. And we're looking at a couple others of those potentially that will come up, will be up for demolition as well. So you'll see this list changing before next month.
Give us a little background on the historic district complaints, please.
I'm sorry, the historic district? Oh, yes. We've gotten some complaints on those, so Officer Broach is working with our preservation coordinator, and we're taking a look at those. If need be, they'll come before the Architecture Heritage Board to answer questions as to what's gonna happen to those properties, because what we don't want to happen is demolition by neglect, when someone gets to the point where they're not taking care of their property, and then we get to the point where we have to do something we don't want to. They are actively working on those together, so we hope that that will work out to be a good resolution.
Any further questions?
Just wanted to say thanks again for an excellent report. Lot of good information.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 10 is Resolution Number 2018-12-10-03. Excuse me. This is the cancellation of the last meeting in December. Do I hear a motion? Or Mr. Scott, is there anything you'd like to say prior to that?
No, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Sears, is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor, say...
My partners in crime who are absent today are opposed to this. I want you all to know that, okay?
Yeah, I'm sure they were. That's why they're absent.
So we'll need to send them a notice not to show up right now.
Now, let's let them just show up. How about that? Don't they give a not being here? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion carries. Item 11 is the city manager report. Now, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Very briefly, I would remind those members of the City Commission present, as well as those absent, that Wednesday morning at 8:30, we're scheduled to go into a retreat discussion with the commission and staff to consider what we have accomplished in the current year and to look ahead at the remaining work that needs to be done, and perhaps some prioritization of that in terms of things underway and so forth. So we look forward to that meaningful discussion Wednesday of this week. I would also say that following our regular meeting tonight, we do request an executive session to discuss a number of personnel matters. Those include promotions, as well as recommended new hires. The list is longer than we might normally have, but I think the conclusions will come really quickly, and so we can work through that list. And in the spirit of new hires, I would like to take this moment just to shout out to and welcome John Castle as our new city engineer on the engineering staff. He's present. He's got a robust background in engineering, local governments, and roads, and we're pleased to have him with us and working with us, and he'll get to know you and you he as we have the retreat and work forward.
Mr. Scott, would it be appropriate if we put Mr. Castle on the spot just a little bit to tell us about himself and that kinda thing?
We were going so well so quickly here. Typically, we don't do that, and John didn't know I was gonna give a shout out, but if he'd like to say a few words, I don't see why not.
Or you can pass. I'm putting you on the spot, so whatever you're comfortable doing.
Well, they have a copy of my resume. They can get that to you. But I was born in Tennessee, raised in Inglewood, and worked at licenses in the northern suburbs of the county. Twenty years working at the Bluegrass Airport. I'm sorry. Twenty-one years in the Kentucky Air Guard. Retired from that. Deputy commander of the 123rd Civil Engineering Squadron. I've got a lot of background that they've recognized there, but I've got a lot to learn, too. I appreciate coming here. I'm really impressed just in the few days I've been here, and looking forward to the rest of the time I'm here to help Ron and Earl and everybody else here in the county city.
We're glad to have you very much. Earl, you're glad to have him, I'm sure. Earl had a full head of hair when he got here. Make up at what you will.
It's a warning.
If nothing else, we are in that section called Hear the Public. As I promised, the public, anything you wanna say for three minutes on any subject that has not been covered on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move right along. And to Commissioner comments, Mr. Atkins?
I just wanted to highlight all the neat things that are going on in our city. That brochure I mentioned earlier, the miracles on Main Street, that really was really impressive. And I've shared that over the weekend with some visits from out of town, and, you know, hopefully encourage some of our friends to come back before all those things, to enjoy some of those things. Really very impressive brochure. And I, too, was impressed with the parade. Kevin Carter, Commissioner Carter got sick before the parade. He chickened out on us. Commissioner Terry forced all of us to ride in the parade, and she got sick during the parade, so please excuse their absence from this meeting tonight. But I wanna say to the community, I'm just really thankful and humble and grateful to the fact that you've given us the opportunity for all five of us to continue serving for the next two to four years and get the work of the city done. And as we move into the Christmas holiday, I wanna let you know that I am thankful for the opportunity to continue serving.
I think you covered it well, and we're glad that we were able to get Nick to say something about the parade, because the numbers were huge. I know the downtown businesses were very grateful for that. They were, as I circulate around, they were certainly busy and happy about that. So one thing he did not mention, because he wasn't asked of him, but I'll do a shout out, that that ice rink will soon be erected, and the kids will be on the ice, even though it's not real ice, right? Safe, safe ice.
I know, I'll thank the staff for all of their hard work in the Christmas tree lighting, and particularly the Christmas tree itself this year. As soon as the kids turned it on, I have to confess that I was truly proud of that Christmas tree. That was excellent. That was excellent. So thanks to staff for that. I had the pleasure of attending, once again, the annual banquet for the Kentucky School for the Deaf. I'm gonna tell the commission, or what's left of us up here, that at the next one next year, I want all of us to go. It is truly inspirational to see a gentleman who's not only deaf, but he's also blind, and to see how he communicates and to hear his message. I came away, just changed just a little bit because of that. And he had one lady that was to his left, and she held her hand up the whole time, and every now and then he'd just reach over to touch it, just to make sure he still had his bearings, because, as you know, if you close your eyes, you lose some of that equilibrium. And then he had a lady to his back who was doing something called tracking. I had never heard of this, but as the audience would applaud, and in deaf language, that's applause. And as the audience would applaud, she would tickle his back like that to let him know what's going on. And if somebody got up in the room and left, she would signal that to him on his back as well. It was truly fascinating, and I wanna encourage all of us to go next year. Also, the 200th anniversary is coming up in four years for KSD. The Boyle Landmark Trust had their annual meeting at Jacobs Hall. If you have not done the Christmas open house, and I don't think they're gonna have another open house the rest of this season, I could be wrong. I hope I'm wrong. Joanne Hamm deserves a tremendous shout-out for what she has put together in Jacobs Hall. I can remember when it was just a first floor. Now it's a first floor. It's a second-floor museum. It's a third-floor museum, and she may have even gone on up to the fourth floor. And by the way, you also have the privilege of having access to go all the way up, eight floors, up to that turret and see Danville from above. But the Christmas decorations are just breathtaking.
That's right.
And it's a marvelous thing. Jennifer, are they gonna, is she gonna have any more open houses that you know of? Boy, I tell you what, that's a shame and a real missed opportunity, and somehow we really need to help promote that next year. This community needs to come to the realization of the long history and the progressive thought of 200 years ago. The structures that were built back then that no longer exist today show me a real understanding of what it means to produce an institution. And that's all I'll say about that. Obviously, I was impressed.
It was the first of its kind in the nation, too. You don't wanna miss that very important point.
So while we, we're gonna celebrate Center College's 200th year, and the very next year, we're gonna celebrate KSD. Think about that. Those two institutions, one year apart. This community had some real thought leaders, real thought leaders.
I wanna make this announcement on behalf of the Brantleys. They sent us an invitation as a commission, but they also asked us to share it with the public, and that is that the Sounding Joy Women's Choir and the Men's Choir, their concert is scheduled for tomorrow night, Tuesday, December 11th, 7:30 PM at the Presiden Church. Admission is free to the public, but donations will be accepted in support of the Gladys Project.
Okay. Anything else? We'll move right into the payment of the bills, which you have presented before you. Chair, we'll entertain a motion to accept the bills as presented.
So moved to accept the bill list dated December 10th, 2018, $847,540.15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Item 13 is the financial report. Ms. Gossar, I believe the floor shall be yours.
Good evening. You have before you the financial report for the first quarter of this fiscal year of 2019. As an overall, we have a surplus, over budget of $673,000, about $673,000 over budget, which is about what we usually are, and this all comes from expenses of the staff doing an excellent job of holding expenses.
You wanna rephrase that, 'cause you said over budget?
Under budget.
Okay. Little bit of difference there.
Yeah, under budget, sorry. We have that left. But if you look at the general fund side, the revenue is under budget of $464,000. That is kind of normal for this time of year. Our first quarter is usually our worst quarter. That is, across the board, that we're down a little bit, not just in license fees. Of course, taxes has been zeroed out of that, 'cause they're seasonal items. And you have operating expenditures that are under budget for $701,000. That well makes up that. That is due to your excellent staff. Municipal aid, which is supplemented by the general fund, revenues are continuing to go down, as you can see there, even from what we expected. So that means that the general fund will have to continue to continue to do two road projects a year. We're off, the general fund is also financing the Second Street Bridge, which is due to be done this year. We'll do a spring and a fall paving list. The fall paving list is just not on this budget report, as it was, the bills come in afterwards. Stormwater fund is red on budget, pretty much, and the revenue is just a little bit under $4,837. The operating expenditures, though, are well made that up. We're only doing small projects still in the stormwater fund, as it's been evaluated, and we're doing what we have cash to do for without borrowing any extra money. Garbage fund is red on budget with... Garbage fund is red on budget with a net surplus of $4,837. That's also supplemented by the general fund. Your utility fund has a slight of 8.3% better than budget in revenues and a 3.45% in operating expenses, and of course, that's due to your staff doing such a great job. Your parking fund is red on budget with a $31,000 surplus, so over budget. What this budget report shows is that we are on par for the rest of the year. We don't have a lot of extra money because we put off some things until the second season, second part of the year. We're still in the hiring process. We, the budget has full hires on there. We're still in the hiring process, as you all, as Ron has, the City Manager has indicated today that, you know, we're going to do several hirings today. So, that helps a lot, too. So, but this shows that we're red on par. We're not getting a lot of revenues, though. Extra revenue's coming in, though.
Gentlemen, any questions for? Michelle?
It's still early. Still early.
It's still early. And like I said, that our Jennifer normally has a little less revenues than what we expected very first, and it catches up.
Don't let pizza you not bite us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Got to keep expenses down.[1268.23][1268.23](Laughter)
Item 14 is Resolution Number 2018-12-10-04. This is in regard to the cemetery maintenance contract renewal. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The existing contract expires November 30, expired November 30, 2018. The contract allowed for one renewal, not to exceed 18 months. In this case, staff is recommending you extend the contract, renew the contract for the next growing season to conclude November 30, 2019, at the existing cost level and see no increase. The annual contribution then for the maintenance would be $70,037.64 at a monthly rate of $5,836.47.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll offer a motion to approve Resolution 2018-12-10-04.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Motion is second. We're in discussion.
Is there a reason we're just going one year this time, had 18 months previously? Or did I miss you saying that?
The eight, pardon me, the 18 months was to align it with the growing season at your all's request, and, which is why normally, it's a 12-month contract. And we had had it cycled in the middle of the summer for a number of years in the budget conversation at your all's request. The growing season seem more reasonable.
Earl, is there a reason we only got one bid?
He's really competitive. To be honest with you, I think, I think his price, until it changes a little bit over the course of time, I think, I think you're going to have a hard time competing with him right now. I think he's been doing it for a few years.
Are you pleased with the quality of the work?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
Still, still to your question, it seems like we should be able to see what the other bidders are, if there is any other bidders.
Correct. There, no one bid it, no one bid against him last, last cycle, last June, which was in '17. And the time before that, no one bid against him either then also. So, and we do seek that out and try to solicit more proposals, but one of the things they'll do is compare theirselves to them, and it's hard to compete with someone that's in there and organized and knows their cost to do the work. He has an advantage, having done it so many years also, so.
And I think his care for the cemeteries have really, of the industry growth.
It's increased over the years, correct.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
Right. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 15 is Resolution 2018-12-10-05. This is the Highway Safety Mini Grant Application. Chief Gray?
Mayor and Commissioners, in front of you, you have the usual highway safety grant that we apply for every year. The officers can do traffic enforcement, and we are reimbursed by the federal government. And it's just our usual request to seek, to seek permission to go out and get the grant.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to accept Resolution Number 2018-12-10-05.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion?
Yeah. Appreciate you always doing this. Little, little help always goes a long way. This is $4,000. I don't know if you mentioned that before, but, yeah.
No, this is a mini grant, and we usually, we're talking about 10,000 to 12,000 usually.
(Inaudible).
Yeah, this is just a parcel right now, and we'll probably seek more funds at another time when they release the whole grant.
No further questions, I call the, no further questions or comments. I call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Now, one of you two gentlemen needs to be prepared to get us into executive session.
You in big trouble tonight, buddy.[1551.01][1551.01](Laughter)
Commissioner Sears, are you ready?[1554.71][1554.71](Laughter)
I can't, I can't, I can't make the motion and vote against it, so I'm not going to do that.[1561.41][1561.41](Laughter)
I guess you could lock it up if you want to.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss personal matter pursuant to KRS I think that was the only one that you requested. Okay.
And that's for what reasons, as it say? Personnel?
Personnel, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second? I'll second it.
Oh.[1591.47][1591.47](Laughter)
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. We're in executive session. Mary?
I move that we come out of executive session.
Motion's made. Do I hear a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Motion carries. Y'all got nothing else to do on Monday night, or is it the goodies out there or whatever? Anyway, Mr. Scott?
We had a good conversation about a number of changes in personnel, both recommendations for hire, as well as promotions, and I will ask our Human Resources Director, Donna Peak, to go through those.
Stack would ask that you hire Arnold White to the position of water plant trainee with the usual probationary measures.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we would ask that you hire Landon Miller to the position of public works maintenance worker trainee with the usual probationary measures.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you, are you voting at all?
I said aye.
Okay.[1670.47][1670.47](Laughter)
Next, we would ask that you hire police recruits Michael Dick and Aaron Rainwater with the usual probationary measures.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
And lastly, not lastly, we would ask that you hire Tyler Reed and Kyle Pearson to the position of firefighter recruit with the usual probationary measures.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And the last thing is, we would recommend that you promote Chase Broach and Brandon Recker to the position of sergeant in the police department.
So moved.
With the usual probationary measures.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 That's all.
All right.
Okay, so we've had two promotions and six new hires. All right.
Congratulations.
Well, and congratulations to staff for filling, filling out our staff further and our departments. That's, that's what we want.
I also would, for the rest of us, congratulate those that have been promoted. You've worked hard to get to that promotion. You've been vetted well by Human Resources, as we just talked about in executive session.
And, and with, with promotions come additional responsibilities, so we look forward to, we look forward to all that performance. Anything else to come before the Commissioner's staff? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I just want to call out my buddy back there on the back row.
Uh-oh.
He's been one of those new, 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 new guys walking the beat. Congratulations. Sorry I missed the pinning, but I heard somebody stuck you real well, so that was good.[1778.86][1778.86](Laughter)
Do I hear a motion?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.